Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Pembroke School Committee meeting for Tuesday, May 17th at 2022. It is seven, I can't quite see that, I'm gonna say 7:02 from here, so that's a bit of a stretch for me. If you have any comments, scinfo@pembrokek12.org. And again, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted within a few days. We actually have visitors this evening. Nice to see you all. I was drove into Mr. Wilshire, so I apologize, sir. You're a very good driver, and I'm not quite that good, so I apologize.
Were you rushing?
Yes, I had to pick my daughter up at 6:30, get to the other side of town, and get all the way back here, so it probably, you know, makes it a little more fun. Communications, I don't believe we have any. Approval of bill schedule, they are out. I know I signed off today myself, and I think that's everything I need to cover. And then we do the school committee reorganization, and I kicked up the superintendent, correct?
Yes, this is again my least favorite night of the year. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to open nominations for Chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2022-2023 year. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Okay, so... Side conversation. So somebody has to nominate someone.
I nominate Lance Hendy for Chair.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Sue and seconded by David to nominate Lance as the Chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2022-2023 year. It's a by-roll call vote.
Yes.
Sue, yes, Suzie?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
The vote for yourself. Good, and I make it, I will, I will make it unanimous.
I don't hear any other nominations. Someone asked for a nomination, a motion to close nominations for the Chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Suzie and seconded by Lance to close nominations for the Chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2022-2023 school year by roll call vote. Sue?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
All in favor of Lance as Chair of the Pembroke School Committee for the 2022-2023 year by roll call vote. Sue?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Lance, congratulations, it's your turn. Now you're gonna open the nominations for Vice Chair.
I'm all set, I'm all set. Thank you, Erin. Congratulations.
Thank you all. I know, I know Mike's not here, and we can get into thanking him for all the, the time and effort and the work he did, and, and we'll give that due diligence at the end. But I appreciate your confidence in me, and hopefully we'll continue the great work that's, that's going on. So with that, I'll open up for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Suzie Shaw.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? We need a roll for, with roll call. Sue?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. So I now accept a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair.
Yep, next.
So moved.
Second.
By roll call?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. With that...
The most prestigious roll.
Yes, it is the most prestigious. And now we will have a vote on the position. Sue? We need a, a motion.
I nominate Su Volja, Secretary.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Seconded. Don't worry, I think I had a two or three-year stint myself.
We have a motion and a second. By roll call, Sue?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right.
And the reorg is official?
You are official, so we are moving on to the minutes.
Excellent. Yes, do, yes, I need to get those in front of me. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of Pembroke School Committee Tuesday, May 10th, 2020?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any of those abstained or no? The ayes have it.
My turn. So, in your packet, you have a very light superintendent's report. So I'm gonna start, there's three things. I'm gonna start with the admin compensation guide. So you have, as we talked about at our last meeting, it's a consideration of our first read for tonight. It includes the grid that we discussed last meeting with the 2% increase, which is the same as our units A and B. In addition, you all had asked for the vacation breakout for the administrators on that grid, so what their current contract law allows them. And then, the potential buyback that would be there under their proposal that I made to allow the administrative staff to buy up to five days vacation buyback for FY22 only, understanding that folks have a provision in their contract already to roll forward five days. So this would be in addition, whatever's left in their bank, in addition to those five days, up to, up to five. So you have there what people could potentially buy back. Again, that'll go down slightly between now and June 30th if this folks will take additional days off.
So are you saying, so I misunderstood, so you're saying that they already have five days to roll, and this is an additional five days?
So their contract now allows them to roll five. So if you have 30 vacation days, and you use 25 of them, you can roll five into the next year. What the proposal that I'm making is, is that if you have 30 vacation days, and you use 20, you can roll five into next year and buy back up to five.
Okay.
But only this one time?
Just this one time, right. So it's just a reset from COVID, I think, you know, this year, so hopefully, the last abnormal summer in start of school that we have. But I think it does impede on people's ability to take the time that is allocated to them in their contract, and still meet the obligations of their, their role here. Obviously, you can see, a lot of what's left in there is our principles, right, because there was meaning to encourage our staff to take vacation when students and staff are not in the building. But there's, the past three summers, there has been an incredible amount of work that has happened over the summer. And we are all hopeful and optimistic that this summer will be a more of a return to normal, and folks will be able to take their time. Because as Lance pointed out the last time, the intention of the time is to take it, right? It's, you know, it's your reset, it's your, and everybody needs that. So the rolling over, the cashing out of vacation, though, you know, the nominal value of it is helpful to people at certain times across the process, the purpose of the time is to take it and recharge. And so, you know, we talk about social, emotional health and wellness of our staff, our administrators are part of that staff, and making sure that they're taking the time that they need, so that everyone's coming into the job and back to the job, with that, that same level of excitement for the work, as well as, you know, a refresh and recharge as we start up the school year, so.
Erin, a couple of questions.
Sure.
With the grid and the 2% increase that you reflected, was that considered in the budget that was proposed?
Yes.
Okay. And same with this, this isn't as, you know, the numbers are significantly different obviously, but I just was curious, because I know what we have to solve for still with the budget.
Right, so we have some breakage in administrative lines in this current year. So the hiring of the two new assistant principals here are at a lower step than the assistant principal that came out, as well as the principal of Bryanfield. So there's enough breakage in those admin lines to cover that amount, even though I expect the amount will be lower, because folks will still take time between today and June 30th.
Okay, that's my comment. Sure.
So this is just a first read. You guys can take a look at it, ask me more questions.
Yeah, any other questions or comments, Sue?
You know, it's, it's tough. Like, I, I genuinely feel like everyone deserves it after COVID. They deserve to be able to take the extra money. But we're, we're solving for such a big gap every year. You know, I'm a little concerned about it. And also, I really like the idea of the staff actually taking the extra vacation. I think it's needed, well deserved and needed. You know, they should go take their vacation and get reset for the next year, because, you know, we're looking at a lot of social, emotional issues coming up that staff's gonna have to deal with after COVID. And I just think it's so important that people take the time. So if, you know, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I haven't made a decision one way or the other, but I just...
No, and just to reiterate, the dollars associated with the buyback are in this current fiscal year, and they exist in the budget. And as far as the wantingness of folks to take time, they've, their ability to take it between now and June 30th, because our banks run July 1st to June 30th, is pretty slim, right? Our last six schools, June 22nd...
So they can't take it over the summer, okay.
No, so there's, you get your new bank on July 1st. These days expire on June 30th.
Okay.
So, absolutely on board with promoting people taking their time.
Yes.
As much as needed over the summer, so that we're not, I mean, this, this is an FY22-only proposal for me. I have not proposed it at any other level.
Yeah.
I do think it's kind of like closing out COVID and moving on.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Significant, it has a significance to us of closing the door on that and moving on.
Thoughts, dear? Questions?
No, I said, I was looking at a couple of gaps, but I figured it out, so thank you.
So there are some folks that don't have anything to roll forward, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
They did a great job of planning and using and preparing for that time.
Well, thanks for putting the extra info together for us.
It was very helpful to see it on, you know.
Turn around that quick.
Yeah, and is Erin reiterated before? I think my concern was, do we create a, a culture that people don't want to take it because they're looking for the, the money value? And, and we don't want to create that, and I don't feel that this is it. Like you said, I look at the names on this list, and I see it's the leadership that have had to put in the hours to fill gaps, to create new programs, to do things that they probably wouldn't have had to normally do if we were in a normal school year. So I'm okay, that's why I think I'm okay with that, and, and knowing that we're covered fiscally. I think it does make sense, and it's not a reward, but a way to kind of thank them for the work and time that they put in, so. With that, I'll accept a motion to accept the consideration for the administrative compensation grid.
As a first read.
As, as presented.
So moved. Oops, sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
We have a motion by David.
Seconded.
Second by Suzie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstain or nays? The ayes have it.
Next, in your packet, for a second read and approval, you have the parent or caregiver survey for the summer school opportunities. So we took the feedback that you had offered the last time, and gave the locations, I think, yes, Habermach and PHS, as well as the, the date options for folks, so that they were making a more informed decision when they were checking it off. Thank you for doing that.
Thoughts on the survey?
No, looks good.
Yeah, I saw one typo, now it's a big deal, the one week, Monday through Thursday, if this is eight, doesn't say 8:00 AM, which, again, not a hill we're dying on, but we just want to correct it.
It's 24 hours a day that week.
Yeah. You're stuck there for...
Bring your safety bags. Yes, we will correct that.
That was another thing I think I saw.
Gotcha. So seeing no more discussion, do I have a motion to accept the second read of the parent survey for the summer school opportunity as amended?
So moved.
We have a motion by Sue, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Suzie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or abstained? The ayes have it.
So the last item under my report, and in your packet, is consideration of approval for the PHS graduation court requests from the class of 2022. We do have one pending request from the Computer Science Honor Society. I know there are a couple of students here that would like to talk to you about that. That is the only pending request we have for this school year. And we will obviously be having a larger conversation about graduation dress, gowns, cords, all of that, at your meeting on June 7th. But because these, this group of students, under the advisor, advisory of Elaine Griggs from Pembroke High School, had submitted their request earlier on in the process, so early that it was actually last year, I wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak tonight. You know, I think that they understand that your approval of this is for this, this class only, because we will be having a larger discussion at your next meeting. But I thought it was important for them to be here. I think their nominated spokesperson is Ms. Kathleen Morris.
Excellent.
Well, Kathleen's walking up. I'll let you know, I did have an opportunity to go to their pending ceremony last week. It is just such an amazing group of kids, the projects that they work on. I think she's gonna talk a little bit about some of the, the projects that they work on, but it's just, it is so amazing to see. It's really a great group, great group of students. And Elaine Griggs, I'm sure Kathleen will mention, is just nationally renowned for her work in computer science and robotics, and we are lucky to have her as well as these students, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that recognition. My name is Kathleen Morris. I am the president of the Computer Science Honor Society at Pembroke High School. So, on behalf of Pembroke High School's Computer Science Honor Society, I am formally requesting the allowance of wearing of cords to the 2022 graduation ceremony on June 4th. These cords are symbolic of members' tremendous efforts and accomplishments for the 2021-2022 school year in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. We are thrilled to have established this chapter of the nationally recognized Computer Science Honor Society organization that supports thriving environments for success in computing courses, encourages secondary students' enthusiasm for computer science, honors academic excellence, and promotes service. Our organization is led by Mrs. Elaine Griggs, who is recognized as a national leader for equity in computer science, and was the recipient of this year's National Center for Women and Information Technology Aspirations in Computing Educator Award. Under her dedicated guidance, we are able to participate in the following endeavors: Girls with Ideas, which led weekly virtual coding lessons to inspire elementary and middle school girls to pursue STEM-based interests; Pembroke Robotics hosted elementary schoolers in robotics lessons; and earned third place and the Judges Award for Programming in the Bot Ball Competition; Future Women Engineers, which competed in the International Technovation Competition for Mobile App Development; and PHS Mentors were recognized with awards from the National Center for Women and Information Technology; Code Camps, we celebrated Computer Science Education Week with a virtual hour of code lessons; Congressional App Challenge, we won first, second, and third place in District 9 for Mobile App Development; and the Enable Project, in which we collaborated with students at UMass Lowell to 3D print a prosthetic hand. The members of the Computer Science Honor Society are extremely proud of our commitment and success in engaging and creating a positive impact in the Pembroke community through our STEM-based projects. To us, the cord is highly symbolic of the continued importance of computer science education, and is reflective of our core values of equity, service, and excellence. According to former President Barack Obama, "Computer science is changing virtually every industry, from manufacturing to health. And I want to make sure that our young people learn it, so you can be in the driver's seat. To be an active citizen in our society, you've got to understand how technology works under the hood." The Computer Science Honor Society hopes that Pembroke Public Schools will continue to promote and celebrate the ideals of innovation and the important role technology plays in the classroom and beyond. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Nice job, thank you.
So there are, Elaine could not join us tonight, but she did share some information in regards to the Computer Science Honor Society, and what students have to do in order to qualify for a cord. So just being a part of the Honor Society does not deem you worthy of a cord. So students do have to be in AP Computer Science, or Technovation, or Bot Ball, or a cyber, or on a Cyberstrat America team. They have to complete the application and agree to attend meetings according to the terms in the charter, charter bylaws. They have to maintain a 3.0 GPA. They have to complete a collaborative community service project each semester. They have to stay in good standing with the National Computer Science Board, sponsored by NSF with Adult Advisors. They also have an officer election in the spring. They would have to apply separately for that. So there are a couple of students in the class of 2022 that would not, did not meet the requirements for a cord under the Computer Science Honor Society, but I think it is important to, to point out that there are some pretty robust requirements associated with the cord in relation to computer science, so.
With that, I'll open up to the board for questions or just comments. Sue?
How, Suzie?
No, go ahead.
How long have we had the computer science?
So the, we, PHS was chartered in 2020.
In 2020?
2020.
And how many students are in it currently? Did I hear that and not remember? Do you, how many are in the Honor Society?
I think fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes, juniors and seniors.
Suzie, can I add one? How many qualify for the cord, if you don't mind me asking?
So I think what Mrs. Bogey made clear about is not everyone in the entire class of 2022, but everyone within the organization itself.
I think there might be one or two students in, that are seniors in the class of 2022 that have not finished their project yet, but they still have some time. Or, let me rephrase that, that applied earlier in the year for the cord but didn't meet the requirements for the cord. According to Mrs. Griggs, we did talk this afternoon, so.
Sue, David?
Oh, sorry, so go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it's a, you know, great, I mean, it's a great Honor Society, and, you know, I'm really amazed by the work. I know my oldest also was very involved in computer science, and did the robotics competition, and, you know, it's a lot of work. And he spent, you know, hours and hours coding the robot and everything, so, you know, I know a little bit about it. It's a great, Elaine Griggs is great as well, so. That's all I had to say.
And the high school students take an enormous amount of time with our younger students as well, to kind of keep the interest in computer science. So they work with our middle schoolers, and, and some instances with our elementary students, to kind of create a feeder into the program.
Yeah, oh, that's great.
Can I ask, what, what cords are we currently, we have National Honor?
Oh, sure, David. So the gold, so...
I just want to make sure I get this right.
The gold cord that students wear is National Honor Society. The blue and white intertwined cord is the top 10% of the graduating class academically, so GPA-wise. The pink cord is for the thespian troop, and there's a blue and gold intertwine, intertwined cord that is the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Those are the four cords that we offer. Military students are allowed to wear a sash that's given to them directly from the branch of service which they're enrolling. And then our elected class officers also wear a sash on graduation.
And I apologize for bouncing back and forth and asking more questions. You may have heard me mention a couple of times, I have a bit of a short-term memory problem. And that, it's not, I'm not joking, I really actually do. I'm hoping that's gonna get, the switch is gonna flip eventually, but in the meantime, can you help me understand, like, you're meeting weekly?
Yes.
And...
Kathleen, if you can help us and just stand at the mic, so our friends at home can hear you. Thank you.
You're gonna feel like you're being interrogated a little bit. Rumor has it, somebody said that I might be a little... somebody said that I might be a little intense sometimes.
That's okay, I'll, I'll take it.
But it's okay.
We learn, in the Computer Science Honor Society, we learn perseverance and grit, so I'm ready for it.
Intensity and teamwork, right?
Absolutely. So we do meet, I would say, weekly, so we have after-school meetings every Tuesday, but oftentimes with those individual projects, we meet for larger periods of time, I know that we have our full society meetings on Tuesdays after school, but I know when I was leading the Girls with Ideas mentoring, that was also Monday after school, and then also Wednesday for Technovation, and I know those involved with the Enable Project were working on printing that 3D hand almost every day, given the length of time that the 3D printer actually takes to print, as well as the Bot Ball students that work in their, you know, after school, but also on the weekends and things like that, and do their own collaboration, so more than once a week, but that Tuesday after school is our most rigid date.
I, don't go away.
Oh, no, I'm not.
The interrogation's not done yet.
Bring it on.
Where I'm getting it, I'm trying to kind of hone in on the time spent with the club, but also the time, of that time spent that transfers over into community service-type hours, as I try to take an apple and an orange and kind of compare them where, where they cross over, what are those things called, where the circles and they overlap?
Venn diagram.
I'm trying to get to the Venn, okay, I'm trying to get to, told you, a little short-term memory, but I had a visual, so I'm just trying to see, like, on average, what do you think the students are doing as far as community service as it relates to this organization?
Absolutely, so the, the Tuesday meeting that I mentioned, that's more of the coordination of those community service projects, but what I mentioned with the Monday, that would be, I would say, up to three hours, given the preparation, as well as mentoring with elementary and middle school students, and I know that our Bot Ball team, I see, sort of oversee that in my role as president, but I'm not as involved, I know that they spent multiple hours on a weekly basis, having elementary school students being able to come to the high school and work with them directly, whereas I was on a virtual platform, but that was a few hours every week as well, and the Enable Project, just to clarify, is that prosthetic hand, so that is given to an individual who does not have a hand, which is a given, but those are hours doing, that's community service as well.
Yeah, I think, I would think it's fair to say it's at least 100 hours of community service over the course of the year.
Absolutely.
And probably touching, impacting other students that you're mentoring or encouraging, kind of incenting, probably 100?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So 100 hours, 100 students? All right, did that help, and I think I'm done with the interrogation.
That's okay. Thank you.
One more question, where, where is the prosthetic arm now?
So, we should have brought it in, it's at the high school right now.
Oh, is it?
So, UMass Lowell will facilitate the donation of that prosthetic hand, but we did, I think Mrs. Obi was able to see it at our recent pinning event, so.
Oh, wow.
Should have brought it, that would have been a, good, that would have been a good one.
See what we're working on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All set.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
No.
And, and I think we've answered some of my questions, as far as the requirements go, it's been some of the conversation that we've had when it comes to adding cords is, how does that meet what the other groups have and what the other requirements have, as we set a baseline for expectations for what is represented at graduation versus what is represented at a PIN ceremony, or each of these societies' own award ceremonies, correct? Because we look at graduation a little bit differently because of that, so we talked about, so it's a 3.0 GPA to be qualified for that.
Correct, you have to be in AP Computer Science, you have to do the community service piece, you have to be in good standing, you have to attend their meetings.
And our, the other groups, we know, top 10 is obviously
Right, so the other groups have varying levels of requirements, obviously, we'll talk more about that on the 7th, there are some, the thespian troop does not have academic requirement, there's this community service requirement, they work more on a point system, the TRIAM Music Honor Society has a very hefty community service requirement, and also an academic requirement in relation to music courses, not globally GPA courses, so they're all a little bit different, and again, you know, what we talked about at EdSub and Policy Sub, and a couple of weeks ago at your, your first read meeting was about, you know, the vision for graduation, and whether it's a celebration of a collective accomplishment, how do we still recognize individual accomplishments, and what that looks like, so, ton more conversation to happen on that moving forward.
Right, and, and that's why I think for tonight's purposes, we're just looking at this year's graduation and, and this request for the cord for this year, so, is there a nomination to accept the request for the Computer Science Society's cord to be worn at graduation this year?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Sue, second by Susie. Is this a roll call, or is this just?
Just all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Elaine, Mrs. Griggs did say that the cords get shipped directly to the high school from the Computer Science Honor Society, so, and the last time we did this in 2016, there was a concern about ordering them and getting them here in time, but they are already en route, if not already, at Pembroke High School, so.
Excellent. Thank you to our guests for representing yourselves tonight.
Is everyone here for the same topic or?
Yes, a motley crew of them, they're here for the same topic.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thanks for coming out.
Yes, thank you for coming.
We've been lonely since the end of COVID, ironically.
I know nobody comes anymore, so.
I was just itching to interrogate somebody, so thank you.
Anything else in the superintendent's report?
That's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Erin. With that, we have future meeting dates and topics, so our next meeting is June 7th. Is there no, there's no need for anything sooner, correct?
No, we have no other pending requests associated with graduation, you know, the vocational conversation that we started at the meeting on May 10th, I'll bring some additional information on June 7th, those are two pretty significant topics that I would anticipate taking.
So we think we can get to it on the 7th?
Yeah, a good amount of time, but there are a couple of other smaller things floating out there that I would ask that we just move on to the second agenda in June, so there was a request from Vicki Penese and Sue Renee to come to talk to you all about a group called Moms Demand Action, I'm going to ask that they come for the second meeting in June, that group is associated with safe gun storage and Massachusetts gun laws, they want to talk to you a little bit about what some school districts are doing in relation to that, and what opportunities we have here in Pembroke to look at some of that, so.